Meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at 6:08 PM. Okay, let's see. Who would like to do the invocation on council? Would you do the invocation, please, Mr. Treasurer? Or let's pass it on to the city clerk, because I did call on you previously. The city clerk, can you do the invocation? And the city treasurer, could you do the pledge of allegiance?
Everyone bow your heads. Thank you, Lord, for this evening. Thank you so much for keeping everyone safe and bringing everyone here safely. Thank you for the new year and everything that it promises to be for all of us here. And we're looking forward to a fantastic meeting, and thanks, everyone, for coming out. Amen.
Everyone, please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all for being here. Very excited to be back. I know the rest of my colleagues are excited to be back. I had three weeks of vacation myself from my day job and my night job, so I'm back to work as well. So I hope you guys all were able to either be close with your family or get close to them in thought if they've passed, if they're no longer with us, and establishing good memories and renewing ourselves this new year. So reinventing. We shouldn't always wait for the new year to be able to have all those, what do they call them? The resolutions and, you know, doing all these things. We should constantly be improving ourselves and doing the best with ourselves. But, you know, it is kind of a big milestone to hear that 2024, how am I going to do things different? So good luck to you guys in pursuit of those positive changes in your lives. We have a lot of, we have a short meeting today. Promises, hopefully, it'll be a short meeting, because it's only like three or four pages long. So let's see if we can keep to an efficient meeting. The topics are not intense, they're not controversial, or anything where there's a high debate. And I have like about five speakers. So if you're ready to speak, make sure that you, once we call on the speakers, make sure you line up so that we can see how many speakers we have. Because as soon as I don't see anybody, I'm going to close the oral communication. But let's start off by doing the roll call, please.
Councilmember Manning. Councilmember Montero. Councilmember Patterson. Mayor Pro Tem Reyes English.
Here.
Mayor Vargas.
Okay. And Councilmember Montero is... Okay. We have a new speaker system up here, which, so for the residents of Hawthorne, we just want to let you know that we have a new speakers, microphone system that's integrated with the voting system onboard. Okay, right here, there's like a little voting system. We can press some buttons. I don't get to see where he's voting, I don't get to see where she's voting, they don't get to see what I'm voting, because there's a privacy screen. Your option for a yes, a no, abstain, is right here on this little panel. So it's pretty high-tech, and it didn't even cost a lot of money. We're just modernizing our city council equipment with very simple things. One thing that you guys are noticing is are the bright lights up here. Okay, energy-efficient LED lights, most likely, right? LED is the most efficient lighting source right now that's out there. They're laid out in a manner in which they're lighting up the whole room, and we're saving money on electricity to power those up. So just wanting to let you know what's going on. We also have two screens outside. So if there was ever a very important topic that a lot of residents come to the city council meeting, residents would be able to stand outside and look at our two screens that are out there. I think there might even be a third one in the main lobby, right? Possibly. But there has at least two screens outside. So just letting you know what we have here on the city council. Small, but very powerful improvements. So we're using the city's money, the people's money, for good things too, and making sure that our meetings run smoothly. Kwanabui. This is Community Services Manager Kwanabui, who will introduce our first presentation, which is the Los Angeles Dodgers Foundation Community Services Department.
Like the mayor said, good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Kwanabui, and I am the Community Services Manager. The Community Services Department would like to do a brief presentation on our partnership with the Los Angeles Dodgers Foundation. We started this partnership with the Dodgers in 2018. At this time, at that time, we had eight teams and less than 100 kids registered. Every year after that, we receive more and more participation from the community. Tonight, Gerardo Iriate, our recreation supervisor who oversees our youth sports, will update you on what we're currently doing and what we would like to do in the near future with the Los Angeles Dodgers Foundation.
Good evening. So I'm going to go ahead and give a small presentation on the Dodger Foundation, the work that we do in conjunction with them, present a potential partnership on the project to bring it here to the city of Hawthorne, and also what it would mean moving forward. Okay, so before I get started with the actual program and what it entails, I'm going to give a small little background information on who the Los Angeles Dodgers Foundation is. That's the primary foundation for the Los Angeles Dodgers baseball team. Our partnership with them encompasses the Dodgers Dream Team, which is one of the branches that the foundation oversees. In conjunction with Dodgers Dream Team, they also oversee the Dodgers Dream Fields, the L.A. Reads Program, College and Career Accelerator, Science of Baseball, and in this together. Below that, you'll see some of the contributions that they have done since the inception of the program. And to just give you guys a small detail about it, I'm going to just play this short video for you guys.
Dear L.A., we are more than just a city. The Dodgers are more than just a team, and the Dodgers Foundation is bigger than baseball. We are tackling the most pressing problems facing our city with a mission to improve education, healthcare, homelessness, and social justice for all of us. We launched our Dodgers RBI program in 2014 to provide an inclusive sports program that addresses basic needs in our most challenged communities. Today, a new chapter begins. We're excited to share with you our new program name, Dodgers Dream Team. We invited our kids, parents, coaches, and partners to help us determine how to better serve the community we are so passionate about. We felt it was important to convey a greater sense of future focus, reflect on the comprehensive nature of the program, and double down on our impactful vision for our neighborhood. We want you to know that the Dodgers Dream Team program will continue to use the power of sport to provide critical resources and services to our neighbors experiencing social injustices. Our partnership with recreation departments and nonprofit organizations will help us increase capacity and scale, achieving even greater impact for more than 12,000 kids and families each year. Applying key learnings from the pandemic, we will intentionally reach our goal of serving 25,000 kids by 2030. This work is possible because of you, the countless coaches, parents, and partners serving as unsung heroes for L.A.'s most vulnerable youth. Dodgers Dream Team is more than just sports. We build confidence, strategies for success, and hope for a brighter future. We can continue to uplift the next generation, L.A.'s very own. It takes all of us. Join our Dodgers Dream Team today. Sincerely, your Los Angeles Dodgers Foundation.
So that was Nicole Whitman. She's the chief executive officer for the Los Angeles Dodger Foundation. We've built a very strong relationship with her and the program over the last six years. Since we brought Dodgers Dream Team program to the city of Hawthorne, we've seen some amazing things. Basically, to sum it in short, we've made baseball programming affordable for families. Everybody knows with time going by, everything's getting more and more expensive. What basically the Dodgers Foundation has done for the city of Hawthorne and its residents is basically remove any obstacle so that everybody can participate in recreational sports. So this means that part of that includes being able to play for a small fee, which is $15 in our city, providing the kids with multiple uniforms, and also the equipment to participate in these sports. They also provide the coaching trainings for all of our volunteers, because this is 100% driven by volunteers. They give us a, basically, a position for us to fill. They give us $30,000 to hire a program coordinator to assist us with the program. This is a few of the things that I have mentioned that they also provide, such as skill clinics, Dodger Days, which is a big Dodger festival at one of our locations, attendance to Dodger games. And they also provide us with what is called the Field Champion, which is a liaison between the foundation and the city of Hawthorne. And we're lucky enough to receive three, where a lot of the partners only get one person. As the manager mentioned at the beginning, we started this program back in 2018 with just about approximately 100 kids. I arrived in the city of Hawthorne at the tail end of the program, and I've been working with it ever since. And then this now, 2023 was our sixth year, and we grew to 18 teams, four different divisions, and serving 300 kids. These are some of the stories that our cable department has covered throughout the years. With us being one of the 14 affiliate partners, not all affiliates get an opportunity to host programming with the Dodgers. Our first one was back in 2019 at Holly Park. We hosted a fitness clinic. One of the good things about the Dodgers is that because of who they are and what their name, the weight that their name carries, they also bring a lot of stakeholders into play. So with that fitness clinic, we were able to also have the Los Angeles Lakers Foundation come in, and they brought all the coaches to train the kids. In 2020 was a difficult year, because we were planning to have our program, but because of COVID, we had to restructure the way we did things. So the event here was a partnership between the Dodgers Foundation, Uber Eats, where we were able to send out food packages to a lot of the families in the city. Dodger Day in 2021 at Holly Park has been one of the most successful Dodger Days that the program has had. It was the most highly attended event at Holly Park, and it belonged to the city of Hawthorne. That day, we distributed about nine tons of food to our families. And some of the things that come with the Dodger Day, because you guys might be asking, so what's even a Dodger Day? The Dodgers come, they bring some other alumni, previous players do autographs. We have clinics for kids. Vision to Learn comes out. We do free eye screenings for kids who need glasses. Just about anything that the kids can receive, from food to services to goodies, they all get this on these days. And then again, following with Dodger Day 2022 and Dodger 23 this past year, which I'm going to be showing you a clip towards the end of the presentation. Not only has the program has been very impactful to our community, here's a few of the things that we've been able to provide to our community members, along with some of the programming. Their manager, Dave Roberts, also chooses coaches to be coaches of the year. Since we started our program, we've had five coaches of the year. Again, so there's hundreds of coaches and all these different affiliates, and only five get selected every year. And we've had five in the span that we've had this program. At the right, we've had kids who have been participating in ceremonies on the field. Below, you'll see another one of our coaches of the year, who is also now commissioner in our youth commission. One of the other things that I can't show, because it hasn't been brought out, it hasn't gone live, is we were able to have three kids be selected by Nike to be part of their new campaign for youth. So that's three kids in Hawthorne are representing the city of Hawthorne with Nike to do photo shoots for baseball and their new apparel, everything that they have that's coming out in their division. So these are different activities and opportunities that kids would otherwise would never get a chance to. So these are things that are making an impact in these kids' lives, that are definitely going to make, help them become successful contributors of the world. So that leads me to the actual presentation focus, the dream field. So every year, the Dodgers Dream Team Foundation works with different municipalities and programs to create a dream field. This is basically revamping the baseball facilities that a city has to make it more usable for their program participants. Over the years, the city, the Dodgers Dream Team Foundation has a goal of 75 fields by the year of 2033. Right now, they're currently at 63, three being in the city of San Bernardino, that just did the groundbreaking last November, and are set to reopen this spring. So they've invested $19.6 million on these fields as of date. And the city of Hawthorne is actually being considered for a Dodgers dream field. So on the board, you'll notice some of the surrounding cities, Lenox, Inglewood, several at Inglewood, both for their city and then the county part. And the latest one was done at Edward Vincent Jr. Park. So some of the benefits for these Dodgers dream fields, everybody knows that with the increasing population here in the county of Los Angeles and the city of Los Angeles, we're kind of, we're running out of park space for all of our community members. So these are just some of the percentages of the things of why it's important for us to have space for kids to participate in recreational programming, not just baseball. So we really want to focus on giving kids an opportunity to improve their lives on the social and emotional side. Why Hawthorne? We do use our parks frequently and highly, not just from a department standpoint, but also from the local high schools in the area and also the little leagues. Our park facilities are in dire need of renovations. We also want to create a safer park. Everybody knows that the nicer a park is, the more people are going to want to go to it. And also, this is going to have an increase in our programming, because people want to go where Dodger dream fields are being built. Also, the opportunity for additional programming is always a key focus. Everybody knows that the Dodgers franchise is not just a local known team. This is, this team has become an international known team, just with the recent signings that they've had. There's just the impact that they have on a global scale is going to be very important. And to be able to have a, just a partnership with such a team is going to bring a lot of benefits to the city. Some of the things that would happen if the city does support this motion is our fields will receive all proper leveling for safety reasons, the base anchors at multiple lengths, upgraded backstops. These are all safety precautions so that our kids are able to place the sport in a safe manner and not get hurt. So with the support of council, back in 2022, conversations this start of Hawthorne being one of those selected cities for the Dodgers dream fields, specifically at Jim Thorpe Park. Last year, contractors were sent to the actual park to survey the facilities. And then we're looking at 2024 being where the Dodgers Foundation secures the majority of the funding for this project. It would be, it would include both fields at Jim Thorpe Park. So next, we would just also ask for the support of city council to back this up. Lastly, I can show just a quick little video of a Dodger Day at the park here in the city of Hawthorne.
The city of Hawthorne. Reporter Eric J. Dockery has all the details. The Dodgers Dream Team invited children of all ages to come out to Holly Park for Dodger Day. This is their fifth stop of their 2023 season. The event was presented by Arco and WSS Cares. They had food, games, and a training camp. They had food, games, and a training camp.
Our Dream Team program, this is our 10th season. We are serving 11,000 boys and girls across Los Angeles and Long Beach at 80 different locations. And you walk into these Dodger Days, and I have chills. I have chills because we've come so far in 10 years with the level of resources we're providing for families, the quality of resources that we're providing for families. And to see the smiles on faces and the level of participation from our partners throughout Los Angeles, it's just a really awesome feeling.
The Los Angeles Dodgers Foundation partnered with UCLA Health to bring the Coach for Good Program, which allows kids and parents to work on their sprints, agility, power, footwork, and jump.
It's good to get the family out here to, and I always like to get the parents out here to, let's run with the kids. I think one of my biggest and most inspirational moments was having my mom run with me, having my dad train with me. So if I can do that with these kids here, with these families here, that's, that's the, it'll last forever, that moment will last forever.
Yeah, it got me active. Got me breathing and ready for the rest of the day.
While the Dodgers Day was going on, the Dream Team was also celebrating MLB Play Ball Weekend.
I had to hit the bat, and then I ran to first base. I did it again, but then I was, I got a little distracted, then somebody took the base from me. Then, well, I got out, I was out.
So across the country, in various forms throughout the weekend, there's youth baseball and softball, and amazing things like the Skills Clinic that we have here to make sure that the game of baseball and softball is on display, and that families realize like they can participate too.
The Play Ball Event had three games for the kids: Home Run Derby, Softball, and a Ball Top Challenge.
So just in short, not every affiliate of the Dodgers gets to host a Dodger Day. The Dodger Day is a pretty big deal. As I mentioned before, there's 14 affiliate partners, and they only have five that they do in a year. And Hawthorne is always, is one of the five that always gets to host, because the Dodgers Foundation constantly comes to us because we get the job done, whatever it is. So with your guys' support, know that we're not just attaching ourselves with a global team, but we're bringing recreational programming to families that need it, because, I mean, that resonates a lot with me. I'm the second oldest of five kids, and my parents couldn't afford programming because of how expensive it was. So I had to volunteer to cover those costs. And that led me to working at a park, to finding what I wanted to do in life, and giving back to the community. So this is something that you guys are giving other kids an opportunity to have, meet a mentor, and connect them with the necessary services and programs that they need, so that they can become good human beings.
All right. Thank you so much. Let's give them a round of applause. Community Services Department. We'll talk after the meeting, Josh, about this stuff. But thank you so much. Are there any questions, any comments from our City Council? Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Okay. First of all, Jerry, thank you for the presentation. You look very handsome tonight.
Thank you.
I really appreciate the enthusiasm of our Community Services and Rec and Parks, all of us together, making obviously this endeavor possible for our youth here in Hawthorne. I lived for a long time across the street from Jim Thorpe Park. I know how busy that park can get. I was a baseball player at one time, coed and other. And I enjoyed my time in the park as a child, as many others will. The improvements of our parks are very important. Throughout the years here in our city, we've been providing funding to assure that our 10 parks are getting the upgrades that they need. And it's a great partnership through the Foundation of the Dodgers to be able to provide additional funding. You know, whenever we want to make improvements, it takes money. And oftentimes, our money is already being used in other capacities. However, kudos to your department, kudos to your efforts, and everyone involved. I look forward to seeing what the park brings and how it's going to provide for more in the future, kids using the park to do exactly what they'd like to do, not just in baseball, but use of the park for their benefit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have somebody else? Okay. Let's give a big round of applause once more to our, our staff. Well-connected to these bigger teams here in the LA County area. So we also have, we had a connection with the LA Galaxy, with the Lakers, with all those major teams that we have here in, in this, in the LA County Basin, so. All right, so let's move on to the next item, which is Southern California Edison, AB205, James Peterson. Introduction, Diane. Well, James Peterson will be the presenter. So please, let's, we try to limit these to 10 minutes, let's see if, let's see what you've got for us.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council, and best wishes for a Happy New Year. I know I saw you a few months ago, and thank you for having us back. I'm Diane Forte. I'm the interim Government Relations Manager covering the City of Hawthorne. I had listened to the last City Council presentation about AB205, and when I talked with the City Manager, we thought it might be a good idea to come back, because we heard some information that wasn't totally correct. So I brought with me tonight Ron Gales. Unfortunately, James Peterson has, as yet many people have gotten the flu, so my colleague has decided appropriately to pinch, pinch-hit, pinch-hit as the Dodgers' presentation was so, set us up for that. So thank you so much, and I'm going to turn it to my colleague, Ron Gales, and we'd be happy to take questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Really grateful for the opportunity to address some of the concerns, specifically about the proposed fixed charge on electricity bills. That's the downstream effect of AB205, which was passed in Sacramento. And with your permission, I'd like to speak more about Southern California Edison's proposal and how it would benefit the residents of not just Hawthorne, the City of Hawthorne, but all Southern California residents, if that's all right. There is a presentation on the screen, but rather than take the time to go through that, I'd really like to address some concerns. And there has been a great deal of misinformation spread on social media and other media outlets about the fixed charge that I'd like to address. One of those that I see used a great deal by opponents of the fixed charge is calling it a utility tax. This is a really false characterization. This is in no way a tax, and I'll explain why. The fixed charge that is being proposed, first of all, a little background, this, as I said, is a result of the passage of AB205 in Sacramento. There are a number of participants in this proceeding by the California Public Utilities Commission, SCE, PG&E up north, San Diego Gas and Electric down south. There were just some of the participants, there are others that are making proposals as well. Our proposal for this fixed charge, the benefit for all residential customers is that it would lower the cost of using electricity. Pardon me for being simplistic, but you hear the term cents per kilowatt hour. It's similar to hearing about dollars per gallon in gas. Cents per kilowatt hour is what customers pay, that's what they see on their bill. What the fixed charge would do, the structure that's being proposed by Southern California Edison, is it would reduce the rates that customers pay to use electricity. And we, we see that if our authorization, I'm sorry, our proposal is approved, those rates would drop by 25%. Now, what does that mean for people who, during the hot times of year, when they are turning up their air conditioning to deal with the increasing numbers of very hot days, that's going to cost less. If you use the same amount of electricity before, you're going to be paying less for using that electricity. There are people who, they may in the future, either now or in the future, want to make use of electric vehicles. One out of four cars being sold in California right now is an electric vehicle. Today, a lot of people are not in position to purchase one or lease one, but they may be in the future. And by lowering that cents per kilowatt hour rate, what that means is the fuel that you're using to, to power that vehicle costs less. So the idea of the fixed charge is, on a customer's bill, the, the costs of energy would be separated out. There's no additional markup to that. It is solely the cost of providing that energy, and that depends on how much a customer uses. The other part of the bill would be a standard charge, just like this seen on cable bills, on phone service bills, on water service bills. It has also been said that this proposal would be income-based, in the sense that you wouldn't be paying based on your usage, you'd be paying based on your household income. That, too, is incorrect. The only thing that would be affected by the, a household income, is the amount of the fixed charge. In general, what SCE is proposing, and there are different proposals from different groups, is that there would be a standard fixed charge for all residential customers. That would be the same on the bill every month. The exception would be customers who qualify based on their household income for discounts on their bill. They would get a lower fixed charge. And for clarification, what SCE is proposing is that those customers, they are enrolled in programs known as CARE or FARA. And by the way, we found that about 30% of Hawthorne's residents are in those income-qualified programs. Their, their fixed charge would be lower, either $10 or $15 a month. The fixed charge for all other residential customers, and that would just be throughout the state, would be $51, and that's what we're proposing. But again, not a tax on top of existing charges. What would happen is a reduction in using electricity. The idea is paying less for, for using electricity. That's what that is about. So I just want to address those concerns about it being a tax, or it being, requiring some income verification. There would be no need, in our most current proposal, for anyone who is not enrolled in CARE and FARA, there wouldn't be no need for income verification for those customers. Customers who are enrolled in those programs, they already undergo a verification process to make sure that they're qualifying for those 30 and 18% discounts. And by the way, for the attendees, if people here believe that they are qualified for those rates, we encourage as many customers as possible who qualify to sign up for those, because they do provide really needed discounts for, for households that are in the, below the federal poverty line. Oh, sure. Sorry, I get a little carried away with this. One other thing I want to address here, that a lot of people like to accuse the utility of using this as a way to earn more money. The way that fixed charge is structured is that utilities would not receive any more money than they're receiving now. What happened is, the amount of money that comes in would be paid by different customers. I'll be, and I'll be direct here. Customers with large families who use a lot of electricity, they will benefit from the lower cents per kilowatt hour. If someone is, if you're a customer who uses a lot of electricity, who does crank up their AC during those very hot years, hot times of year, these lower cents per kilowatt hour rates will benefit you. By the way, I didn't even mention about the CARE and FARA customers. The way this is structured is, those customers who are enrolled in those income-qualified programs, they would see their bill go down, we see, we estimate by between 5% and 18%. So there are benefits for low-income customers, but there are benefits for all residential customers as well, in cost, in less cost for using electricity. Another thing I want to address really briefly, I know we have a short amount of time, is that California is going to be using more and more electricity. Californians are going to be using more and more electricity. That's why it's important, and we're very cognizant, to get that cents per kilowatt hour rate down. And this is one of the ways we're looking to do that. I'm going to stop there, and I would like to open it up to any questions from the council members. Thanks very much for the opportunity.
A quick question, could you repeat what those fixed charges are?
Certainly. The standard charge, and this would be for all residential customers, would be $51. Customers who qualify for income-qualified programs, known as CARE or FARA, their fixed charge would be $10 or $15, depending on where they fall in the household income spectrum.
Anybody else?
Thank you. Thank you, Edison, for being here and for your presentation. As you are aware, we're part of an aggregation with Clean Power Alliance of Southern California. I would like to see Southern California, California, our aggregation actually come and present also, so that we could truly understand, because we have two sets of customers here, customers that are with Edison and customers that are with Clean Power Alliance. And they have to buy in, obviously, to Clean Power Alliance, who's procuring at a lower cost energy to the residents of Hawthorne. So having said that, I would like to see that happen, City Manager, in bringing Clean Power Alliance to help us understand a little bit more on what this means. On top of that, not all the communities here in Southern California, in my opinion, and listening to what's occurring currently with the PUC, and they have to have a response back by July 1 on what selection they're all going to make with regards to how residents are paying for their electricity, right? Some communities will benefit, while others might not. We're talking about Sacramento, Fresno, other areas, and then you have Southern California. I understand that there's an incentive program that some receive, right, for using lesser energy, at least from Clean Power Alliance. I have yet to hear whether Edison has an incentive such as that as well for residents that are using less energy. However, I want to know more on, for instance, the pay schedule that folks set. From what I understand, is the based income that they receive, what that looks like for our residents in Hawthorne, right? So there's a proposal for how it's revamped electricity rates based on income, right? And you're saying that they're not going to be looking into personal data or information on how residents, what their annual income is, or how they're going to be charged based off of that income? Okay, that, that's, that's some of the stuff that's obviously being said, right? How they're, they're going to be billed differently because of their income. I know the CARE Act is basically for those that are lower income, have special needs, have families with special needs, and how they could apply to receive a lower-cost bill. However, I think there still needs to be more community discussion and more community input, so that there's a real understanding of who and how it's being benefited. Your discussion tonight is basically saying, if you lose, if you use lower energy, you're going to get a lower bill, right? If you lose, if you use less energy, your bill will be less?
Let me be clear. The energy part of the bill will be lower, depending, if you, if year over year, use the same amount, that part of the bill, like I said, they would be split into two parts of the bill, the part that covers the cost of energy, and that other part, that fixed charge. And that would cover the cost of things such as the infrastructure that Southern California Edison builds, operates, and maintains, all the steel and wires and poles and vaults, et cetera, and all the customer service people, all the parts of our business operation that would be contained in the fixed charge. So a customer who sees their bill, they'll say, oh, I'm paying $51 if our proposal is accepted for all that, and then my energy use, I'm paying for what I use. Did that clear, did that clarify at all?
So there's two charges.
It's one bill, but the bill is separated into those two charges. Right now, it's all in one cents per kilowatt hour.
But there's two charges.
There are two categories of charges, and they're put together, yes.
Two charges.
Yes. And some people will pay more, and some people will pay less. As we say, people with, who are on the lower end of the income spectrum will have lower bills, total bills. But it's going to depend a lot on usage. I think the people who are less likely to benefit, for example, are people who are, let's say, one or two people living in a household, and they don't use much electricity. They don't turn up their, their air conditioning when it gets hot. That kind of, they're not going to be immediate beneficiaries. But as people use more and more electricity, having a lower cost per kilowatt hour is going to benefit not just lower-income households, it's people who use electricity. And we believe, Southern California Edison does, that there's going to be more and more electrification, and important to keep the cost of those, of using electricity down. I hope that was helpful.
It was helpful. And, you know, it kind of spoke to me, because I'm only one in a household, just myself. I don't use air conditioning, and I don't use heat. I don't use air conditioning, and I don't use heat, okay? And still, my bill's high. So that's just an example of myself.
Yes.
And I could show you my bill. But I'm with, I'm with also Clean Power Alliance, right?
Yes.
And I just want to make sure that, again, the community understands, prior to the first, so there could be more buy-in and more understanding on what your bill's going to look like moving forward, with two costs, basically.
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely agree. And Diane has a point which she'd like to introduce.
So if you were part of the Clean Power Alliance, those customers would, are also included in this proceeding, and, you know, you can, of course, invite them to present. There's no problem with that. The legislation itself, one of the primary drivers, was to try to make the total bill less for those who can least afford it, the CARE and FARA customers. And at the same time, recognizing that, as Ron had said, you know, electricity's going to be used more and more, so trying to reach the clean energy goals, to have that variable rate be less. So, and then they're receiving all these different proposals, and it is a public forum that, you know, comments could be taken.
Sure. You know, like, the PUC, just to make that meeting alone is hard, for difficult to get to provide, you know, public comment. So again, it's important for the residents of Hawthorne, and what this might mean to them, with regards to the changes. But I appreciate Edison making the time to come out and give a presentation to council. Look forward for additional dialogue with your agency, and more importantly, advocating for the residents of Hawthorne, to assure that they understand what exactly this means.
We are very appreciative of that opportunity. I would really, we believe as well, we would like to make sure that the residents of Hawthorne are well-informed and can make a decision based on all sides of the argument. So that's, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
So. All right, real quick question. So essentially, if I'm gone for a month from my house, and if right currently, I'm not using, I could use zero watts per hour, I should technically be paying zero, right?
Well, what, the electric grid, even when you're at your home, is still operating. So yes, your usage would be zero, but all people who are connected to the grid are, have a, it's in everyone's interest that everyone who is benefiting from the electric grid takes part in the building operations and upkeep of it, because it's a system that serves all of us. So, yeah, but your energy charge for that month, yes, would be zero.
Energy charge?
The energy charge.
I'm talking about the existing. You're saying that we're moving to a system where we're going to have two piles? One to cover infrastructure, and one that is proportional to the use cost? The cost is proportional to the amount that we use?
That is the proposal for the fixed charge, and that is to, yeah, to make sure that the costs of maintaining that infrastructure continue, and are as equitably shared as possible.
Okay, but, so currently, you're saying, what I'm hearing you saying is that we already have something like that in place? Or, if I got my bill, I'm out of town, I'm off in, like, on a business trip to, like, Europe or something, and I don't get to use, everything's off, yeah, sure, the electric grid's on, surrounding me. What should I approximately be paying?
So, let me see if I understand your question. When you're, right now, there is, the rate you pay, I'm going to give you the average rate for residential customer, is 36 cents per kilowatt hour, okay? Included in that is all the infrastructure, and included in that is all the amount of the energy you're using. You're getting paid, you're getting charged 36 cents for each kilowatt hour that you're using. This breaks it out, so that customers who are using less, they're not going to pay, like you said, you're out of town.
No, I know, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry, then I misunderstood, I apologize.
I turned off all of my appliances in my house, I turned off all the lights, there's, nothing's on, everything's disconnected.
Mm-hmm.
So I should pay $0.
Well, let me ask you this, if you don't use your cellphone for a month, and you don't make any texts, and you don't call, you will likely get a bill from the cellphone company for your usage of that.
No, I don't care about the cellphone company, I'm not talking about you, I want to find out from you.
Right. But what I'm saying is, the fixed charge is something that's not just in electricity, it's used by utilities, all kinds of utilities, for water service, for, like I said, cellphone or for cable companies, that you still get the charge for that. So, for the charge for the infrastructure that's there to make the delivery of electricity or water or whatever, possibly.
I know, sir, but like, if I'm not using anything, and everything's disconnected, what's the current charge that I'm getting paid, that I'm getting charged for the infrastructure? If you're saying that currently, everything's just directly connected?
What part of, what part of the 36 cents per kilowatt hour is being charged for the kilo?
Especially if I'm, there's zero kilowatt hours that I'm using.
I don't want to misspeak, I don't want to give you the wrong information, but I would say, I'm going to, and Diane, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that about, I believe it's about 70% has to do with more of the infrastructure, is what you're paying for.
So if it's correlated to, then I shouldn't be paying anything? So if I have everything disconnected, as is, I shouldn't be paying anything right now? And that's not true. So my concern is that, so for the residents, so you can understand my thinking is, what's the current rate for usage? And now that we're, the proposal says that it's going to be like 50 bucks that we're going to have for a fixed infrastructure charge, is that usage rate going to be the same, or is it going to decrease?
The usage rate, yes, the usage rate will decrease by 25%. The cents per kilowatt hour will decrease by 25%. That's what we're planning to do.
Yeah, the math doesn't seem to be really providing for much savings. On the contrary, I think it might be an increase with that $50 that you're, that you guys are proposing, but it doesn't matter, we'll just take a look at it.
Certainly.
And if we need you to come back for any more questions, we'll bring you back.
Certainly. And I agree, for some people it will. For other, for customers who use more and more electricity, it will, over time, it will become more beneficial to them.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did I miss something?
Ma'am, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I just wanted to point people to some resources on the screen for more information, that's all. But thank you very much.
To the chair? I think I understand what you're trying to say. I think you're saying, he's saying that the standard rate is $51, no matter what, and you're saying that if you don't use your services, it's zero dollars, it should be $0, but you would pay $51 because it's the standard rate? Is that what you were, okay?
Yes, and that money, and those charges would be for maintaining the poles, the wires, the, everything that makes it possible to deliver electricity, as well as the customer service aspects.
So it's, it would be, in his instance, it would be $51, plus if he used any usage. But if he doesn't use any usage, it's just the standard 51?
Yes, that's what's being proposed.
So typically, the people that are not using their energy, like councilwoman, Mayor Protem Reyes, she would be paying the $51, even though she doesn't use her services.
As much, she would not benefit as much as others.
So she wouldn't benefit? So neither one of you would benefit?
In contrast, now, this is not Hawthorne at all, and so it may not be of your interest, but customers who live in the inland empire, who have to use their air conditioning throughout much more of the year than the hot season, it would benefit them as well. And also, as I said, customers who are interested in using more electrification in vehicles, in electric heat pumps, et cetera. So, but yes, there are definitely people who won't benefit in the near term, I'm not going to deny that.
Can I, can I ask one last question?
Can I just finish? Very simple mathematics equation here, you guys will see what I'm talking about. I pay $100 right now for my electricity bill, let's say, and that's the current usage charge. All right, gentleman says that it's going to decrease, the usage rate's going to decrease by 25%, right? So I'm going to be paying $75, but on top of that, I have to pay $50 for the infrastructure rate. So instead of paying 100 bucks, I'm going to be paying 125. That's actual increase for the average resident, at least people that I know, of 25 bucks. So there's just no decrease there, simple math. All right, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask real quickly, with the increases that are proposed, what is going to be done, or what is going to be, what is it going to be used for? Is it for additional, perhaps, underground utilities, infrastructure, new repairs, investor benefits? How is the money going to be used?
That money is not, that additional money is not going to be generating any more revenue, or any more profit, so this is not going to investors, okay? The bill is structured, so this all has to do with money that's going to be covering the costs of operations, and that is infrastructure, and that is people who come out and make repairs, and who do the maintenance, and the people who answer the phones, and print the bills, and all that, all that work, all the work that goes to providing the electric service. That's what it's for.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, sir. If you could just take the comments that I said, and if you have something to, say anything additional to what I had mentioned a little while ago, just please let us know.
Happy to. Thanks very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a body, and not to any individual council member. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response, or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Deborah Sturtevant, Love Beyond Autism. Deborah? Hi.
Hi. Stay right here.
No, you come up to the podium, you get the microphone and the, the, what do you call it, the lights on you. Can you please speak into the microphone, so we can hear you nice and clearly?
Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Deborah Sturtevant. I'm a proud resident of Hawthorne for over three decades. Today I stand before you, not just as an individual, but as a representative of a cause that holds a special place in my heart, for our city, the city of Hawthorne, an initiative that transcends barriers and fosters love beyond autism. April is National Autism Month, and I believe it's the perfect time for our community to come together and support those affected by autism spectrum disorders. I am excited to propose an Autism Walk, an event that aims to raise awareness, promote inclusivity, and provide much-needed support for individuals and families facing challenges of autism. Why an Autism Walk? Because it's more just a stroll, it's a step towards more compassionate and understanding community. By walking side by side, we can bridge the gap in our understanding and showcase the strength that lies in our diversity. As a representative of our licensed business here in Hawthorne, I want to assure you that we are in good standing with our city, and that our commitment to the community is unwavering. The purpose of, the proposed event will take place once we get more information, how to go by it. We envision a route that not only transverses our streets, but also touches the hearts of our residents, leaving a lasting impression of unity and empathy. But we cannot make this vision a reality without the support of Hawthorne. Today, I humbly request your assistance in three key areas. Firstly, we would like to, we would like to seek your support in obtaining necessary permits, or to ensure a smooth and safe event for all participants. With your help, we can navigate the administrative process efficiently. Secondly, we would like to invite you to join us in securing maybe donations, both monetary and in-kind, to make this event impactful. Whether it's through financial contributions or community resources, every bit will contribute to the success of our cause. Last, we kindly ask for your assistance in advertising the event. Your support in promoting the Autism Walk through the city channels, such as social media, newsletters, and local announcements, will significantly enhance our outreach. The benefits of this event extends beyond a one-day gathering. It's an opportunity to show, to showcase Hawthorne as a compassionate and supportive community, one that understands the importance of standing together for a shared cost. In closing, I am confident that with the backing of Hawthorne, we can make this Autism Walk a resounding success. Together, we can create a ripple effect of understanding, compassion, and unity that will resonate far beyond the boundaries of our city, the city of Hawthorne. I am open to any questions or discussions.
Yeah, no, thank you, ma'am, for being here. This is just kind of directed towards us, so we can't respond, but what you can do for us is just provide your information, and the information of your organization to our city manager, so he could, so we can take a look to see about your organization, what you've been doing on our own also.
Okay.
But, and see in which ways we can help you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for stepping up for that cause. That's really important, of a great concern right now, all over the, all over the world. I'm going to do it myself. I'm going to do it myself. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'm going to do it right now. Nat August, Sentinela Youth Services.
He used algebra, right?
Okay.
Hi, good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Nat August, and I work for Sentinela Youth Services, also known as CYS, as the Systems Transformation Specialist. We offer free services to the Hawthorne community at no cost to the city, thanks to the Department of Youth Development, and we work with the community, local schools, and police department to address community and youth safety through mediation, peaceful conflict resolution, and community-based service linkage. Widespread and long-term community safety is possible by addressing underlying needs. By approaching behavior as an unmet need, we as adults can offer more well-rounded and impactful support to our youth, our families, and our community. CYS works closely with schools in and around Hawthorne to offer comprehensive training and empower school staff, anyone from school security to school counselors, to work with youth and families to address underlying needs, and subsequently know how to offer appropriate supports. We thank the Hawthorne Police Department, Hawthorne's official diversion partners, for the important work done in collaboration with CYS. This essential partnership enables our organization to literally divert kids from being booked into the juvenile justice system, or expelled from schools, and this option can be the difference between a young person having a productive life that benefits society versus a life that is forever damaged by a criminal record. And I'm to here today on behalf of CYS to spread awareness of our free services within Hawthorne, and invite anyone who's interested in learning more, partnering with us, or volunteering with us, to reach out. Our work can't be done without the input voice or participation of this community. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you for stepping up and working with the youth through the Sentinela Youth Services over there at the South Bay Web, right? Yeah, absolutely, with the web, so thank you. Feel free to come back, and let us know any projects that you're working on, or any successes. Fay Johnson, Chair for the Veterans Affairs Commission.
Hello, and thank you, city council, for this opportunity to share tonight. My name is Fay Johnson, I'm the Chair of the Veterans Affairs Commission, and I wanted to report out on our progress of the Military Banner Recognition Program. This project was created by the Hawthorne Veterans Affairs Commission to recognize and honor the military men and women of Hawthorne who are currently serving, or who have served in the past, to include those who are now deceased. These banners will be displayed on Hawthorne Boulevard between 120th Street and Rosecrans during Memorial Day and Veteran Day's holidays. These banners can be produced and hung for a total of $300 per banner, which includes the hardware necessary for the pole installation. And again, I want to thank city council for the budget contribution of $3,000 that was previously authorized at previous council meeting. I would also like to thank Councilwoman Katrina Manning for her generous contribution of $300, and Councilman Alex Montero, who's absent, for his generous contribution of $500. These funds will be, will be used to provide sponsors- These funds will be, will be used to provide sponsorships for our military honorees. Tonight, I, I have available a trifold that basically tells you about the program, what the eligibility is, and it also has an application with it. This is what we're going to use to advertise the program. And I'm respectfully asking the council and the audience if they would help me spread the news, share it with veterans that you know in our community, and get the word out. The deadline for our submissions, so we can get the banners made and put up in time, would be February 15, 2024. I also want to take this moment, since I have a few more minutes or seconds, to thank the Chief of Police for letting us use Sergeant Saldana. And I'd also like to thank the city manager for letting us have Erica Lampkin. She's definitely an asset to our team, both of them are, so thank you.
Ma'am, real quick, what's your target? How many banners do you want to get? So you're waiting for applicants to equal a total of how many?
There is no limit on how many we can do. It just depends on how many flagpoles we have, which we have a lot. So I have a feeling we're going to have far more flagpoles this year than we do. Veterans that step forward. But there is no limit.
Maybe we could choose a segment of Hawthorne Boulevard to do it and just figure out how many flagpoles you have. And then if you need to wait till you get that number of applicants, then that's when you submit that, so you don't, so you can order in bulk in one hit.
Yeah, the only challenge is the printer, if we want them up in time.
Okay, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Gordon Michael Migo.
Hello, everyone. Happy New Year. Hope you all had a good Christmas. On December 12, 2023, the Hawthorne City Council had a presentation by office untitled about the Civic Center. Over the past month, I spoke with residents, business owners, and other people about it. Their views ranged from curious to dismay on the proposal for the new city hall in Hawthorne. They questioned the need and the cost for what is essentially a second city hall that will be connected to the existing one via an elevated walkway. They object to the overall design of the building, especially the idea of a council chamber being on the third floor. Instead of having two structures, it makes sense to add extra floors, to either add extra floors on the existing city hall, which has the council chamber on the first floor. Ideally, the new city hall would actually be located along Hawthorne Boulevard, fronting along the Boulevard itself. That will give it a prominent stature. It would be constructed on parking lot as adjacent to the Bank of America. In front, there would be, of the city hall, that is, a water fountain and a clock tower. As a result, the entire parking lot in the Civic Center must be opened up to the customers of Bank of America, which is an important financial entity for people of Hawthorne and the region. Obviously, parking structures above ground need to be built in the Civic Center to accommodate the people in Hawthorne City Hall, Bank of America, and New Park in the downtown area. The proposal for an underground parking structure on the north end of the city lot is a terrible idea for many reasons. With an above-ground structure, the south-facing part of the structure could serve as a backdrop for showing movies outdoors. 126th Street is an important roadway in the Civic Center. It must remain a two-way street for convenience of vehicle drivers and efficient flow of vehicle traffic. Further, 126th Street between Hawthorne Boulevard and Birch Avenue needs to be converted into an actual street with sidewalks, lampposts, trees, and so forth. In regard to the Bank of America, the building, which would still remain, but it would actually need architectural facelift to improve its looks. And it would also include windows installed on the sides that will, as I said, improve the appearance and function of the structure. It has been suggested that retail cafe, public hall be placed in the Civic Center. Instead, a revitalized mall in the downtown area that is named, or that should be named Hawthorne Renaissance Plaza. Hawthorne, denoting the city Renaissance, rebirth, renewal, and plaza, would be a perfect location for retail stores, restaurants, entertainment venues, community events, SpaceX Welcome Center, Tesla dealership, and so on. So let us work together to make it become a reality so that Hawthorne can be that shining city on the hill during the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Rosa Ortiz. Oh, she's not here? Oh, okay, okay. She's there, right in the back.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I would like to pass this out. Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Rosa Ortiz. I have a small business here in 139th and Prairie.
Okay, you can just closer and kind of stay there just so we could hear it.
Hear it? Okay.
Yeah, there we go.
Let me take this off. My name is Rosa Ortiz. I have a small business on 139th and Prairie. And I want to talk about the small business grant that was approved on November 14 meeting. That was the last meeting that was held on it. The program was initiated back in February of '23. There were several, more than several approvals of the proposal stating that this was a service type of grant. But when the grant was advertised, it was advertised as money. I have copies, if I can pass them along. So through, I went back after viewing the November 14 meeting. I went back all the way to the beginning of February. And the proposal was for services. But somewhere along the line, it went from services to grants to, the one that I applied for was the employee retention. And at the end, it was just training. I included the advertising that we saw as business owners, which was English and Spanish. That would be page two. And it clearly says, especially in Spanish one, it clearly says $5,000 to businesses that qualify as dollars. There is nothing in there that says services. I also included on page three, one of the flyers that was in the website for restaurants. They also had a $5,000 grant. But they specifically stated kitchen equipment, technology upgrades, employee training, bonuses, non-perceasing hardships. I also included, I'm sorry, I don't publicly speak, the proposed budget of the $1 million that was allocated from the $32 million that was received from the COVID money. And I included the breakdown of that $1 million. Okay? You guys obviously have seen this because you guys obviously approved it. But my, what I would like would be to figure out or find out why to the public was it addressed as a grant of dollars? And within the city meetings, it was services. If we do not come to the city meetings or we don't see them on the web, then we're not informed. So we're counting on what's presented to us as the public on the website and on the flyers that were all over the city to be what is fact. So I would just like for the city council, city manager, to kind of investigate and may rectify the, the outcome of this. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, can you provide her the form just, or how should we approach this?
Giving me direction to study your case, I think would be the first step.
Okay.
And then I would need the packet that you provided to council to take a look at. I did not have, receive one.
I think she might have one for you. Could you just take a look at her, the situation?
Yes, will do.
And, yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make reference that I know SoCal Gas and some other, I think county, offered other services, other grants or whatnot. So
That's on page three. That's on page three.
Are we done? Now, so, City Manager?
Yes.
If you could just look into SoCal Gas with Mike Carroll. Mike Carroll, I know that they were offering assistance too. So look at the other county, at the county also. I just want to make sure that everyone's on one accord on who's offering what.
Okay. Noted.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and sharing that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else wishing to address the City Council? Formal line. I only see one person. Okay. Commissioner Orlemann?
All right. You sure?
I don't want to fall down. My name is James Raddick, 3822 West 144th Street, Roger Park. Read the articles in the paper and online about the building being built on the county section of Inglewood Avenue. And they, according to the articles in the paper, they said that it's, they didn't have to use any of the, like, the building and safe, building planning department or have any building, planning meetings with the public because of the new state laws that was passed by our great legislators and senators and governor that takes these rights away. Are we, is that able to affect us here now? Because I see on the agenda, this talks about the changing the standards for residential and mixed commercial in the city. So will we be doing, when the developers come in and they buy the properties, if they want to put multi-units there, we won't have any say-so at all? Because they could go through the state and get the permission to do the work? Is that how it's going to be working now? Thank you.
Next, please. Commissioner?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members, and city staff and neighbors. I would like to bring your attention to some legislation that is pending in Congress right now that I am asking for your support on. Right now, in the 118th Congress, and this is federal, not, not state, there is a Senate Bill Number 414, and the House Bill is HR 1083. And I have copies for you of some of this. Basically, what this comes down to is it deals with dependents indemnity compensation. So starting after the Revolutionary War, the surviving spouses of veterans who died in battle or as a result of their injuries or illnesses acquired during battle, they have been getting what's called DIC and is comfortably known as survivor's benefits. Up until 1993, those survivor benefits were predicated on the rank of the veteran who passed away. So in other words, if you were a general, your surviving spouse got a higher percentage of what your pay had been than if you were a private, for example. After 1993, they did a change to that, and they have it as a flat rate. So right now, if a veteran passes away from a service-connected disability that they have a service-connected disability rating for, or they have been totally and completely disabled for 10 years, the current payment is 44% of what their disability payment had been. So in 1993, or excuse me, in 2023, that flat indemnity payment where the disability payment had been 362195, if that veteran passes away and their spouse qualifies, because there are conditions for it, to get survivor benefit, they would get a total of $1,562.74, which obviously won't even pay the rent at this point. And so what this bill is doing is trying to increase the survivor benefits so it is the same percentage as for all other federal employees. So the only difference is that right now, veteran surviving spouses, if they meet all of the qualifications, are getting 43% of what the veteran's disability payment was, where a federal employee in any other capacity other than a military capacity gets 55%. So basically, this bill would do two different things. It would increase it so that the base rate is the same 55%, and then also subject to COLA, as all of these are. And the other thing it would do is if your veteran is currently 100% service-connected for 10 years or more, they can pass away from anything. And the surviving spouse, if they know about it and apply, may be granted DIC. One of the other things that this bill would do is it would lower that threshold to five years or more, and it would be a sliding scale up to 10 years. So the reason I'm bringing this up right now, I have a copy of the bill and everything. There's going, there's already right now 58 cosponsors in the House and 20 cosponsors in the Senate. There's going to be a hearing in the House Veteran Affairs Committee the end of this month. And what we need is to get as many cosponsors before that hearing as possible.
Sorry, ma'am, your time is up.
Our Congresswoman is not signed on as a cosponsor. If you can contact her and advocate to get her to cosponsor this, that's what we need. I'll pass out copies.
Is this a request from you individually, or is it coming from the Veterans Commission?
I just got back in town, so I was not at the commission meeting yesterday. So I'm putting it out on my own at the moment. Because if you're going to take action at the next meeting to put something in favor of this, it would need to be agendized.
Yeah. If you could pass it on to our city clerk. She's the keeper of records. Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to speak and address the City Council? If not, I declare oral communication closed order. All right? Let's get on with our business here. Madam, Madam Clerk, you have three items?
Mr. Mayor, I have three items on the consent calendar. They're items three through five for your consideration and approval. Item three, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item four, City Treasurer requests approval of the warrants for January 9, 2024. Item five, Resolution Number 8448, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, approving an exception to the 180-day waiting period to hire a CalPERS retired and new intent in accordance with Government Code Sections 7522.56 and 21224 for adoption.
To the chair. I'd like to pull five. Of course. I make a motion on all other items, three and four?
Second. Second.
Can I keep this button? Okay. I make a motion on three and four?
Second. See it? Aren't we fancy?
Screens?
No, not yet. And not, not everyone's voted, waiting for you to vote.
I can't see anything here. Isn't it?
No, no, no. Push your button.
I don't see anything. I really don't, guys. I'm not to see.
Did you enter the meeting?
Is that a setup or something, or what? All right. So what do I need to do? Oh, a motion was made. Motion was made here, and the second did.
The votes are in.
Yes. Should be.
The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
All right. This is the first use of our voting system. That was exciting. It was exciting, actually. For me, I don't know. Councilmember?
City Manager, could you help me understand Resolution 5? I have a general idea of what it is, but I just wanted to make sure I was clear.
So if I may, this affects, this from the city attorney's office. Basically, what happened is we had an assistant city attorney that is in charge of all the civil litigation matters. She also handles complex public records requests. She announced her retirement. She was gonna set her retirement date at the end of January. But she visited, you know, before the retirement but she visited, you know, before the retirees actually go through retirement, they have, make an appointment with CalPERS and City of Glendale and they give advice. And the advice that she was given, and I don't know the details of it, was that she should retire by end of the year. Now...
This is this year or last year?
Last year.
Okay.
So, and there is a rule with CalPERS that once you retire, you cannot do any work with the city for 180 days. For six months, you have to sit out. You know, they have rules that you could work part-time up to 900-some hours a year, but you can't do anything for 180 days. The problem is that the recruitment to replace her is going to take some time. So, this is kind of a unique situations where if a council approves by resolution, we can bypass that 180-days waiting period so she could continue to work part-time and help with the city until her replacement is hired.
Does that apply to? Would that be as an employee or as an independent contractor, does it matter?
It's a part-time employee. I don't think it can be as a contract attorney. It's, it's, what she told me was that it has to be a part-time employee.
You're saying she wouldn't be able to work with the city as a, as an independent contractor or as a contract attorney?
I don't think she can. I think it has to be as a part-time employee. CalPERS has some unique rules on that. I could look into further, but she, basically, she told me that she will do it as a part-time employee. The, the problem with a contract attorney is that they're required to get business license and I can't, there cannot be any supervision. It has to be completely independent. Versus part-time employee works under the supervision of the city attorney.
Okay, got it. And is there, let me ask a question. Is there a difference in cost to the city hiring somebody as a part-time employee versus an independent contractor?
Part-time employee gets some part-time benefits. It's not equal as the full-time employees, whereas independent contractors get zero, any type of benefit. They get, so, part-time employees get what's called pars. But independent contractors do not get any benefits from the city.
Is there a difference in liability between one versus the other to the city?
No, not necessarily, especially when we're dealing with someone that's been handling her job for, I think it's, she's been working for about 17 years with the city?
Well, I'm just talking about just the different types of employment.
No, there's no liability. In terms of liability, we have, we're self-insured through ICMA, things of the nature. I don't know if that's what you're asking.
Um, I'm just, just a question, I'm not leading to anything in particular. And, and then, is there different, I guess, rights to employment are being able to retain, you know, being able to retain or dismiss a part-time employee versus an independent contractor?
No, they, I think part-time employees may be covered under different MOU, but she, she would not, as an attorney, she would not be a, become a civil servant, if that's what you're asking. It's same as, at will as any other attorneys.
So, the difference between the two is, one, she had to get a business license to work as a contract attorney. On the other hand, she wouldn't have to get a business license and she would also get extra, a little bit of extra money going into a different pension?
That's correct. That is correct.
To the chair. So, my questions are this. She just retired in December. She knew she was going to be retiring in December. She knew she was going to be retiring in December. If there was a discussion in advance of knowing that she was going to retire, why didn't we start doing the recruitment for a new person at that time?
So, as soon as she announced her retirement and she gave the initial date of end of January, we started recruitment. We did that immediately. But after visiting CalPERS office, she came back and said she would have to retire earlier based on their recommendation. And I don't know exactly what the details of...
Yeah. What was the far-advanced notice that she provided you in your office that she's going to be retiring?
That must have been close to two months?
Two months that she was going to be retiring in December?
End of January.
Yeah.
So, she, I think she, I don't know the exact date, but she let me know that she was going to retire in December.
Yeah. I know that it normally takes about three months and you have to fall within the age range so that you could be able to retire, but in this case, she's worked for the city nearly, what, 20 years or so?
About 17 years, I think.
And then, at a high salary, I'm, I'm sure, retired with great benefits. I would be more willing to see an employee come on board that's probably new to the city. I understand the importance. However, there is an advance here notice that should have been provided so that we could have already been making those recruitments. And are we recruiting now?
We are.
How long have you been recruiting?
That's a question for HR if she's here.
We have been, we got notice December 7, I believe, that she was going to be retiring January 26. And then, after her meeting with CalPERS, she came back and changed the date to December 30. Her meeting was maybe the second or third, right before we went on vacation. And I am recruiting and the recruitment started also right before we left.
So, we can't do a 1099, contract employee? Can't look to another attorney's office for part-time person in all the attorneys that you work with? I'm sure you have someone in there that we could find part-time.
The attorneys that we work with on the civil side are all law firms and it would be a lot more costly than this.
We can't...
We were, actually, we're shorthanded in the criminal prosecution side as well as civil right now.
So, I know there's a revolving door policy that the council did several years back, which says, basically says if an employee leaves, they're not back until after six months, right? So, you're basically saying, you're waiving the, the six-month to provide this one individual to come back?
Correct, because that, that's the rule the city had, policy the city had is following the, the CalPERS rule and the government code. This, they do make an exception through resolution. It's because she's been handling these multiple cases and it's an ongoing case. These are all pending cases, so she's familiar with these cases that she's been working on.
I just don't understand why she retired. I mean, there's obviously communication happening in your office because you're telling me now there's an urgency and that she's the only person that could do it. But what happened to our cross-training and people that's supposed to know, you know, all aspects, especially for the city attorney's office? I would be, I would rather see a 1099, contract employee, versus changing the whole ordinance over one individual.
It's, it's just the resolution, it's not...
I understand, but that's what you're asking. It's for us to make a vote today to provide preference to this one person.
That's correct, actually.
I move? Is there a second? Okay, there's in a sec, a little bit longer. Okay. The motion dies. Bids, openings, and results. Next, we have a bid opening. Madam clerk, item six.
Item six, now is the time and place to declare publicly received sealed bids for Alley Improvement Project, CDBG Funds, project number 24-06. There were two bids received, all were accompanied by bidder's bonds. The prices are as follows. Martinez Landscape Company Incorporated, $398,600. Sequel Contractors Incorporated, $749,600.
Is there a motion?
You're going to, motion to move. Is there a second?
Okay. Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, we have ordinances. Madam clerk, item seven?
Ordinance Number 2247, second reading, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending Section 17.29-040, development standards of Chapters 17, 29, CM, mixed commercial classification, to be in compliance with the housing element by removing constraints to residential and mixed-use developments and approving an addendum to the Hawthorne General Plan Environmental Impact Report for adoption.
Discussion?
Sure.
Thank you, City Manager. Excuse me, thank you, Mayor, City Manager, and maybe Greg, are you here? Real quick question. Is, do we currently have any issued, issued prop, any properties with issues in the department in which have yet to be processed that are either relying on this one item to be passed? Or are we current, or is this something new moving forward?
No, this, this is, no, there's not any applications that are dependent upon this. This is the second stage in complying with the housing element. If you'll recall, a couple of months ago, there was, I noticed an error in the ordinance that you were passing and we had to pull a part of it out. So, you approved everything but that part. This is that part completed now. And this is, this is the second reading, so we did have a public hearing at the last time we met.
Okay, and you're satisfied with the, the verbiage?
Yeah, I wrote it.
Okay. And we didn't miss anything this time? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Greg.
Is there a motion?
Oh, you have a question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Is there a question?
Not.
Is there? Okay. What's going on with this thing? Is there a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Please... Please vote.
The votes are in. The vote reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Thank you, council. So, we, now we have the City Manager's Consent Calendar. Madam clerk, 9 through 11?
Do we need to read item eight again?
Items nine through 11?
You missed number eight, didn't you?
Oh, did I? Okay, item eight, please, ma'am.
Ordinance Number 2248, first reading, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, establishing regulations and requirements for municipal message center network, amending the Hawthorne Municipal Code regarding the same and making a finding of exemption from SEQA in connection therewith for introduction.
I move to introduce.
And just FYI on this matter, it's going to be brought back for second reading for adoption. We typically do it at the next council meeting, but this will be followed as a second reading and for adoption on the meeting of February 13, 2024. So, we're going to skip a meeting for adoption.
Mayor?
Yes.
This thing keeps going off and on, so we sound like idiots.
It's okay.
Here we go again. What exactly is a municipal message center network, please?
That's basically a place where you could have messaging through electronic billboard system.
And this is going to be for our, our electric billboards?
Correct, in collaboration with a private entity. That, that's why we need to have the second reading when they will, can be present, because they can't make this the January 24 meeting. So, they could answer your questions at that time.
But we've never had an ordinance with regards to regulations and/or requirements?
Not necessarily. This is kind of a little different. These are, I, I think when they're here, they could present more information to you, but it's in collaboration with the city. It's the same company that built electronic billboards in downtown Los Angeles, around, right on the 110, near the 10 freeway and on, for the city of Inglewood.
Okay, I'll, I'll have, I'll do an outside defer with you all. Thank you.
Okay, where are we at? Sorry about that. Next, we have, yeah, there's just, we... I did. Done, yeah. Madam clerk, can you please recite the City Manager's Consent Calendar?
We have items nine through 11. Item nine, progress payment number two in the amount of $267,611.39 due to GerbCon Incorporated of Baldwin Park, California, for sewer and main miscellaneous storm drain improvement project, 2023. Project Number 23-04. Item 10, annexation of unincorporated regions within Hawthorne Region 2. Item 11, food services agreement between the City of Hawthorne and the County of Los Angeles to provide prepared meals to feed jail inmates for the Hawthorne Police Department. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the City Manager's Consent Calendar.
I move. I'm trying to keep this thing up.
Second.
There's, we'd like to...
Discussion for 10.
I want discussion for 10 and 11.
I feel bad for pressing this button because it almost seems like you think I'm doing it to you. I'm just trying to say something, okay? Yeah, so, I don't know. So, I had only heard a discussion for 10.
And 11.
10 and 11 for the chair.
I make a motion on nine.
Second. Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Thank you, council. Discussion on 10.
Can you hear me? City Manager, I'd like to ask you for 10. I think this is a great idea that we're finally doing this, but I wanted to know, how many people will that include when we do this?
Okay, no problem. That information I don't have yet. This is just approval for the City Manager. This is under my approval authority, actually. I brought it to council for transparency. What I'm asking for permission is to file the paperwork with the county to start negotiations with the county regarding this area. What I intend to do, once we start negotiations, is have a surveyor go out in the area and calculate the impact that it would have to the city as far as residents, public safety, and those items. So, this is very early in the stage. This area too, if you look at your map and your agenda, is 76 anchored acres, which allows us to move forward without public community input from that area. It's one of the only areas within the spheres that we can do this to. I think this would set us up to set a trend for other incorporated areas to add to the city. So, this is very early and I would like to come back within 90 days to provide that information after I obtain a surveyor to look into the area.
Just a real quick comment of mine. Okay, I just, I will, that area right there is a single-family residences.
Majority is. It's between Crenshaw, 132nd to 135th, I think it is.
And it's in the midst of Monita Gardens, which we know is not single-family residence. It's high-density, a very high concentration of high-density there. So, I hope that the council keeps in mind the situation and that we try to preserve that element there as much as possible. That's all, and I'm willing to support this, absolutely.
To the chair, thank you. With regards to item number 10, there's an estimated financial impact of $23,000. What does that encompass?
That's just the filing fee. So, once we negotiate with the county, with the city attorney's office on what it would cost or the loss of revenue that the county would lose, we would negotiate a price and bring it back to council to move forward with an annexation of this area.
Have we done a full financial feasibility study on, taking annexations such as this to include services, programs, and those that are going to be needed to the residents that reside in that area?
No, that's the next step that I would like to move forward with.
Okay, and you're working with Finance Department on that?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Okay. I move. Second.
Is this only for item ten? Are we going to discuss eleven first and vote?
No, ten. Please vote on ten, please. Please vote on ten.
The votes are in. The voting reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Discussion on ele- Discussion on eleven.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a real quick question, because I continuously see County of Los Angeles, County of Los Angeles always providing for our jails and whatnot. Is there another entity that we could maybe perhaps look into that could provide lunches to those that are inmates in our Hawthorne Police Department? I mean, is there, has there been a research of potential commissaries or those alike that can provide a lunch? Whoever done that?
Councilmember, there are other companies that are private entities that could potentially provide the same service, but for purposes of continuity, getting those meals from the County of Los Angeles satisfies a lot of potential concerns for individual dietary restrictions that our inmate population might experience. So that's a, that's a way for me to say, like, if we have somebody that is temporarily in custody at the Hawthorne Police Department Jail, who has a religious belief that has dietary restrictions, the County of Los Angeles has pretty much every single one of those categories taken care of, and we can just tell them that we need a specified meal for a specified period of days.
So there really isn't a choice? It's like we have to use them?
I, I think that this is by far going to be the most cost-effective choice and the most convenient for our city staff.
Okay.
I'm sure that, you know, we could, we could potentially get those same types of dietary restrictions taken into by going to a public restaurant here in the City of Hawthorne, but it is certainly going to be at a more expensive cost, and it will require more extra staff hours to try and take care of that.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Anyone else? I make a motion.
Second.
Please vote. Just right now. Please vote, guys.
The votes are in. The voting reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Okay, Jesus, what do we have here? All right, folks, we really thank you guys for being here today. As you can see, we have this wonderful technological tool, just needs a little bit of setting up, further setting up, but we were able to make it through the meeting. As best as possible, without too many hiccups, so I think we did good. Thanks, Council. So, this is the opportunity for elected officials to make, to give a report. We'll start off with our City Treasurer.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year again. Glad to see you all again. Glad to be back. Let's see. Last week, I don't know if any of you heard that, Congresswoman Maxine Waters did a telephone town hall last week. It was very informative. She was, talked about upcoming legislation and things that she's spearheading this up-and-coming year. She spoke on student loan forgiveness debate, of course, and issues with for-profit schools, loan forgiveness, issues with the government. So, overall, it was very informative. And to hear about some of the upcoming legislation that's coming up this year that she's spearheading. We have three CDs rolling over into some great rates this month, seven rolling over later in the year. I would like to say I look forward to working with Council and the city staff this year and the many great things that Hawthorne has going on in the upcoming year. Please, see me afterwards, Ms. Ever, regarding your autism organization. I'd love to work with you, okay? Thank you.
City Clerk?
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and wish everyone a Happy New Year. I also was moved by the talk about autism. I don't think there are enough, like, resources to help people who are dealing with children with autism, and even some of the teens and adults who have autism. So I would like to offer any help that I can from the Clerk's office as well.
Councilwoman Katrina Manning, please.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. I, too, would like to participate in your Autism Foundation, and I actually have a check for you tonight, so see me afterwards as well. I think it's a great program, and I've been a part of autism, other programs called Special Needs Network, and they have a new facility, state-of-the-art, for folks out there that have kids that have, kids with autism. But I look forward to celebrating and participating and walking with your organization. Also, I'd like to say, I appreciate the Dodgers' presentation. I think it's so important, and when he mentioned that he was the oldest of five kids and that he had to volunteer in order to be able to participate, I just think about with COVID, what it's done to a lot of our folks. So being able to support that type of program and see our kids be able to play and it be affordable, I'm really on board with that, and I think they do really great things, so I really look forward to us having that Dodger Day here in the City of Hawthorne. Also, I'd like to say, I got an email from Supervisor Holly Mitchell's office urging the City of Hawthorne landlords to participate in the rent relief program. I know that, again, COVID had an effect on a lot of folk, and this program will assist the landlords who suffered and were unable to receive payment for rent. So, go onto Supervisor Mitchell's website and sign up for their rent relief program. The deadline to sign up for that is January the twelfth, so that date is vastly approaching, so you want to make sure that you sign up and apply for those funds that are available. The other thing that I'd like to talk about is the Business Expo. We are having a Business Expo, March fourteenth, 2024. This will be my first year hosting this Business Expo, and I'm really excited, and I can't wait. And so if you have a business, please make sure that you go to our city website and sign up to sponsor or be exhibitor at our Business Expo. Also, last night, I had an opportunity to attend the Business Connect, which I encourage businesses to go onto our website to attend our Business Connect, but it was extremely informative. Greg from our Planning Department gave a presentation, and when I tell you, I learned so much within that time. I was extremely, extremely, felt like a kid, a five-year-old kid, sponging everything, and I learned so much from him. And it prompted me to think about some of the things that we haven't done. And so I would encourage, or I'm giving a directive to the City Manager, to create and a process to update our ordinances that focuses on our priority commercial districts to address our vacant storefronts, some of the things that he talked about in his presentation. In thirty days, if you could come up with a plan of action and identify those priority areas to update our zoning codes. The second thing that I want to talk about is the budget. As I was going through budgets of other cities and comparing it to ours, one of the things that I noticed is that we didn't have a budget message page in our budget. And so I am asking, moving forward, if we can include a budget page message in our budget so that it explains the condition of our city. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmen, David Patterson, please, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, appreciate it. First want to say Happy New Year. It's good to see everybody this year, and good to see everybody just come to participate in this process. It's always great to have your feedback. Appreciate everybody who came and spoke up. I just want to thank staff and our Police Department for just all your hard work and your contribution to our city. Ms. Orlman, I just wanted to ask if you can reach out to me, maybe send me an email of specifically your ask in terms of that particular bill, how I can support. Chief, did I see you with a mustache? Got a mustache? Is that, is that allowed? Mov- it's not Movember anymore? We got, anyways, guess, you know, make some criminals laugh. Is that what it is? A few things, though. Trying to be serious. Mr. City Manager, could you provide a report of the mixed-use development that's happening in Culver City specifically, including other neighboring cities if you like, and the feasibility of that happening on Hawthorne, maybe specifically focusing on Hawthorne Boulevard or Crenshaw Boulevard? I don't know if everybody's seen in City of Culver City and their main boulevards, they are doing a lot of mixed-use development in their residential areas. They keep it very residential, but on their main thoroughfares, there's thoroughfares. Boulevards? They're, they're constructing a lot of new development, a lot of the new mixed-use development, so I'm just curious to see if something like that would make sense in the City of Hawthorne. I would also like to recommend, I don't know if we should put this on a discussion action item, whatever's most appropriate for the Council to discuss, but I would like to have our commissioners attend the Commissioner Academy in Long Beach, March sixth through the eighth. I think it's put together by the California League of Cities? And I think that might be something that our, our new commissioners could benefit from in really being able to understand their role and, you know, do a good job in our city. Mr. City Manager, I'd also like to ask for some follow-up on, Director of Ga- I gave some time last year about polling the community about a potential new charter and what, what the community may be interested in seeing, and if you can kind of report back as to kind of, you know, how that research has gone, and help give us some guidance as to what might make sense to go, to do next. And lastly, if we can bring back two, I don't know if the right term is going to be ordinance, to adjust the City Council's compensation consistent with COLA, consistent with SB three-twenty-nine, which is something that the Governor passed recently statewide, so that elected officials can have their compensation, keep up with inflation. Also, a ordinance that might also do the same thing for the Treasurer and the Clerk as well. And outside of laughing at the Chief's mustache, I think that's it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I hope that this stays on, the mic, that is. Just want to thank Jerry again, and Wreckin Parks, and Community Development. I say "community" because it's, it's, it's all combined together when it comes to these types of programs and services that we're bringing to the Hawthorne residents. Thank you so much for all that you're doing to bring services to our families here in Hawthorne, and your partnerships, not only with the Dodgers, but others alike, and we'll continue to champion, to assure that we're partnering and receiving funding to do so. So thank you for that. I want to talk a little bit about April being Autism Month. If we could include that, City Manager, in a resolution that we declare April the Month of Autism and Awareness. Thank you, Centinella Youth, for your reporting out on services and what you're doing. To our Veterans Commission, thank you for reporting out. For the Business Expo, thank you for your reporting out. For legislation, whether state, federal, or otherwise, we'll look into that. I'd like to know more about it myself, and what exactly that means for our veterans. I have a real concern with regards to California Edison and their presentation today. With regards to history here in the City of Hawthorne, if you remember, a few years ago, we became an aggregate city, which basically said that we want to be able to procure energy, electricity for our residents here in Hawthorne at a lower cost. And when we did that, we became an aggregate in partnership with the County of Los Angeles, where there's roughly thirty-three to thirty-five cities that are also partners with the, with the county, procuring lower energy, whether it's one percent, two percent, three percent. We're still, you know, in partnership to assure the same, which is at lower-cost energy through procurement. The reason we did that is because many residents and many communities and cities know that California Edison, other PGE, San Diego GE, all these other utilities are investor-owned. And all these utilities have investors that are paid, basically, we pay them, right? We pay those investors, and we do this on a regular basis. And unlike California, excuse me, unlike Clean Power Alliance, it's a nonprofit organization. It's a nonprofit organization. It's not investor-owned, and it's a nonprofit organization that provides back its revenues, it's generating revenues or whatnot, back to the community, whether it be at a lower rate, whether it be investments, whether it be the same, lower costs for those that have a need, special needs, seniors, et cetera. And while the time that I sat on the board, I was charged with looking at how we could benefit the community through additional investments, and more importantly, assuring that the community of Hawthorne was procuring energy at a lower cost. So having said that, it sounds like we are now going to be leveraged an additional charge. I know tonight they were saying fifty dollars, fifty-one dollars, I don't remember exactly, but I'm reading, and it's being proposed- I'm reading and it's being proposed, Southern California provide a forty-nine-dollar charge. So already, there's, you know, discrepancies, whether it's forty-nine, whether it's fifty or fifty-one. So my whole effort is basically to assure the community, the city, the residents of Hawthorne that pay utilities, and everything's very high these days, including gas, that we know exactly what's happening here. And we truly understand where our money is going. In spite of how they might say that we will pay less if we use less, well, again, I don't use any. And I'm hardly home because I'm work most of the time. And I don't turn anything on at night. Okay, so I'm still having to pay a big, a big bill. I'm concerned because it's being proposed and the PUC will pretty much have a choice to be made come July. So I had made a proposal to the council back in December or November, if I remember correctly, just basically sending a letter saying that the City of Hawthorne is not in agreement with an additional charge. And that's still my stance. But I need the community's help to understand that come July, you can't be coming here or telling us later that this is not fair and this is something that you didn't want. You need to start speaking up now. So having said that, how can you do that? You have to be able to go to Southern California Edison website, the PUC, its proposal, see what is exactly being proposed to the residents and, you know, make your stance. They might paint a pretty picture and say, basically, you're really not going to get hit too hard, but there's two costs. And they said that. There's an infrastructure cost and then there's a utility cost, which is your kilowatts that you're using. So there is two costs. So when they said that and they verified that, what do you think's going to come next? There's going to be an additional cost added for infrastructure. That's what's going to come next. Because what they're trying to do is now say basically that all the poles, all the lines, everything that they have to keep up with, it's become a little bit too much. And you've heard about the wildfires, the fires happening up in the mountains, infrastructure and whatnot being destroyed. That comes back to us, the rate payer, to have to build that back up, that infrastructure. It's not going to come from the investors. They're going to want to be paid back. So I say that to say this again. Please join in reading and researching and looking up more information on how the proposals to the PUC will ultimately affect you, the pay rate, the residents of Hawthorne. And, you know, go a little step further. Look into SoCal Gas. Because it's always a trickling effect. But I will continue to champion, to assure that, you know, every information that's brought here to us is correct. And if we have additional information or requests for additional information, that that be brought to us. And I don't see a problem with bringing Clean Power Alliance to us also. Ask the executive director to assist us. And, you know, they might be able to provide a little bit more information as well. But it's all on the internet. You could pull it up at any given time. What I'm reading is California revamps electricity rates based on income. How are you going to be verified your income? There's going to be personal information that's going to be asked of you. How else are they verifying what you make to give you that charge? There's personal information that's going to be gathered. It's not just, you know, like he said, you know, no, we don't need that. Yes, they're going to need that. He said that basically that care doesn't provide that. No, care provides that too. If you're looking to get assistance for paying your utility bill, you fill out an application for care. You provide your income, you provide where you're receiving that income from, and whether it's Social Security, whether it's Medicare, Medi-Cal, whether it's any other source of income. And then they base your rate based off of your personal information that you completed on an application. So if they're saying that, no, they don't need to know what your annual income is, that's not true. They need to know how much you're making so they could charge you based off of your income. Again, please, please do all you can to learn more and to hear more and ask for more information. I want to make mention the Landlord Walk-In Tenant Clinic. That's on Monday, February 5th. Free consulting here from two to four o'clock at Hawthorne City Hall. LA County also has a landlord application that is now open and it's for landlords. Landlords, not tenants, landlords. So if you own property and need assistance, look into LA County Rent Relief Program for landlords. Thank you to our Wreckin Parks again, and thank you to Public Works. There's a lot of Christmas trees out there. There's a lot of debris and things that I know is being picked up. And I thank you for your hard work to assure our streets look clean with regards to dumping mattresses and anything else. I really appreciate that. We have our Hawthorne Wreckin Parks Foundation Golf Tournament coming up, Monday, March 18th at Rio Hondo. Thank you so much for the information. There's great partnerships in that. Anyone interested in that, I'm sure we'll have literature out in the lobby. What else? I really love our Spring Hawthorne Guide, Community Services, Winter-Spring Magazine. I really like everything that's in there. And again, thank you to all that provided a Christmas card, a greeting, who reached out to me through texts, email, just wishing me a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year. The same to you. And thank you for the partnerships and all that we're doing. I appreciate every department, every city department head. And looking forward to building out Hawthorne and seeing what that looks like through a new civic center. So thank you.
Thank you. Everybody good? Thank you, ma'am, once more for your efforts with the autism. I know that there's people that are close to me and people that I've seen, that are affected by this with their families and such. So thank you for stepping up to be able to address it. It's a very important issue that we need to figure out, solve, find a cure if possible, if there is one, right? So thank you. Great idea for the veterans banners. I'm really excited about it. I already started filling out one for my dad, who served in the Army during the Vietnam War. So I'm signing him up. And I believe the mayor Protem possibly has one person for sure and possibly a second person that she might be able to sign up. And Councilwoman Manning, I think you mentioned, your husband is a veteran. So it's, so let's start filling these out. Let's start putting them, submitting them. I do have a really cool picture of my dad and his dress uniforms when he was at, where was he at? Fort Sam Houston for a little bit? And up in Waco was the other location, Second Armored Division, right? I'm excited. But a piece of feedback, and I really hope that you guys take this very importantly is that if you put these banners up on Hawthorne Boulevard, north of El Segundo, the poles are too widespread to the left, to the left, on the other side, to the right. It's not going to be very, it's not going to be possible. And the traffic runs faster. So you're not going to be able to see these, you know, the banners and what they say when you're speeding, moving along quickly. And when you look to the right, look to the left, these banners are going to be smaller than you anticipated. We need to stay off of anything north of Hawthorne Boulevard, El Segundo Boulevard. Let's try to focus on keeping this south of, between El Segundo, on Hawthorne Boulevard, between El Segundo Boulevard and Rosecrans Avenue. That way, you know, traffic runs slower, the poles are closer to the people who are driving. You can easily look up without distraction and get to, you know, see your loved ones. Isn't that what we want? So let's just try, let's try to do that, just, you know, okay? Thank you for your efforts. Again, with the issue with the Southern California Edison, we did the calculations up here. Just remember, they said that the current rate is what it is. There's a twenty-five, there's going to be a proposed twenty-five percent decrease, but a fixed fifty-dollar cost. So with that new change, you would have to, your bill would have, your current bill that you spend, you guys know what you spend. I spend a hundred bucks. A lot of you have a hundred and fifty, maybe, you know, higher. Okay, well, maybe even if it's two hundred. But anybody in the hundred-dollar range, a hundred and fifty, et cetera, okay? If you, it would need to be two hundred dollars or more to even out, okay, for you to experience a benefit. And there are a lot of people here who, like, are in apartments, rent, small apartments, condos, that don't require energy like the homes that you might live in. So this really, it's kind of a wolf in sheep's clothing. This is not what you think it is. A majority of Hawthorne residents are going to be impacted negatively by this with the higher cost. It's very clear, the math, we did the math. Councilmember Patterson and myself, we did it. We did it really quickly up here. That's what it ended up. So be aware of that and be cautious and speak up if you don't like it. If you want to pay more, that's up to you, but I think the residents don't want to pay more for this stuff. Okay? Thank you. Of great concern to me, and I, this is going to be a formal directive and we need to see something, a meeting of type. I'm suggesting a Brown Act-type meeting. When you're driving on the freeway, haven't you seen people riding their bicycles along the on-ramps, exits? Pushing carts? You know, just walking across while you're exiting? Walking on the freeway, guys, on the freeway.
I almost hit somebody today.
Let me press this button again. On the 105. You know, I'm sorry if it's going to take a little bit longer to make my points, but, well, the point is, that should not be allowed. Why are these people not getting sighted? Why are they allowed to just walk around? It's a matter of time before somebody might see, hit them. If you drive along the freeway, you have little tents, houses in the bush area. People have just made their little homes right there. When I come down the 710 and make, go on the on-ramp at the 105, it's, there's like a little home that's right, like, from here to there. What if there's somebody in there and they're sleeping and they just kind of roll down and run into my path? Is it going to be my fault? Is it going to be her fault? Your fault? Why is that allowed? Why is the state of California that runs Caltrans? The state of California, Senator Steve Bradford, Assemblymember Tina McKinner, who are our local representatives, and all the other state officials who are responsible for Caltrans as an agency, they can tell them what to do. We need to invoke, you know, our relationships with them to tell them that this cannot be allowed. But the thing is, the problem, though, is with, it happens along the 105. You're right, Mayor Protem. Why? It was poorly, it was not anticipated that we would have a homeless situation, unhoused situation, where people would be setting up shop right there. And how many times you guys heard me that I said these bushes need to be trimmed or eliminated? Because there's people that are making their homes. They're hiding out in there and setting up little tents and there's this one guy that has a Mexican flag right there and an American flag on the side and outside his little home coming down the 105, if you haven't noticed. So, I mean, they could, you could do whatever you want, right? Post whatever you want, but so that cannot be allowed. We need to take that, get the bull by the horns and we need to have a meeting with our state officials. I know where they have representatives, the ladies who attend, but we just got to have more than that, man. They come, they give us like lip service. Oh, yeah, well, we'll talk to the member and the senator and all this. No, we need to, we need to figure out what we want to say and then have a meeting where we have our state representatives here who run Caltrans. Because we need to make, we have a major overhaul strategy on how to deal with this. So I'm proposing that we have, so that everybody's in that meeting on council, a Brown Act-type, a Brown Act meeting where we're here at a council meeting, at a special meeting that deals with this, where we're engaging with our state officials. Would you guys be okay with that? Well, how about this? Let's task the city, that's the director for the city manager to take a look on the logistics for that type of meeting. I think it's better to just let him just figure out how we approach it as opposed to kind of fashion it. Okay? Do you guys all understand what I'm talking about? Yeah, I mean, Jesus Christ, man, I got this guy on a car, this, people riding a bicycle coming towards me when I'm exiting the, you know, just like, all it takes is a little mistake on their part, right?
Mayor, I've been seeing lately, but I've been seeing a lot of people walking on the freeway. And it's, it's been recent, like, I never noticed this in previous years, but recently I've been seeing a lot of folks walk on the freeway. And I'm trying to figure out where are they coming from, where are they going? It's not like they're in the middle, like, towards the end when you're getting off the freeway. It's like in the middle, so it's like four or five miles either way. So I'm trying to figure out, how do they end up on the freeway?
Thank you. So there needs to be penalties. We're just removing the responsibility from those people, from the people who are doing that. And we're just totally removing it and just assuming that it's, you know, not everything's a mental health issue. A lot of it is, but not everything. I don't want to tie it into those smashing grabs that we've been experiencing all over LA County, but that's also a lack of responsibility that's being given given to those perpetrators, okay? When do you think would be a reasonable amount of time? At this point, I'm going to be hitting you up. Maybe by the end, with it, before the next meeting?
Well, Mr. Mayor, tomorrow I will reach out to our elected officials and get a timeline from them.
You can't do that tonight? What?
Maybe.
To the chair. I know we had a representative from Bradford's office, but you know that they're not here Monday through Thursday. They have to fly back Thursday night for events on weekends, so how we're going to make this meeting? I'd like, you know, just so that you know, it'll have to be a Friday or something.
Think we might have to fly up to Sacramento?
We can use our new technology and do a Zoom call.
The last thing on my end. Okay, thank you, thank you. I believe that we touched on a lot of different things, actually. The mixed use, taking a look at that and focusing on certain parts of our city. I like to specifically, like to focus on the stretch of Hawthorne Boulevard from 120th Street down to Broadway, which is right here, on the western side, okay? I think that that's a great opportunity where we can at least attempt to have a restaurant district. It might be small, but it's, there's sufficient enough space that if we have the proper zoning that allows it, facilitates it, the proper infrastructure that widens the sidewalks to allow for sidewalk dining, as was talked about before. I think that could be a good opportunity. I talked to the city manager and he has some ideas and I think as a directive, I would like for you just to pursue that. We got a focused area. We already identified something. There are restaurants there now. But if we do the proper zoning, then maybe there could be some new tenants.
Greg had a great plan.
Yeah, no, but the thing is, we might need to do a little bit of more adjusting on the zoning. Chop, chop, like, a little bit. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is very important for our residents to know that under the leadership of Vaughn and city department heads, 2023 economic summary, we received 24 million in grants, 24 million plus. We had a revenue of 88 million plus and we had 600-plus new businesses. The projections for 2024 is to reach a hundred, a hundred percent completion or in-progress rate of, you know, not only all of that, but overall efficiency and productivity. So again, I'd like to give kudos to our city manager and our city department heads. I think they'll applaud. I also just want to make mention that our California Water Services is announcing their 10th Annual Youth Water Conservation is announcing their 10th Annual Youth Water Conservation Education Program. If we could pass this on to our schools, they are going to have, they're spreading the word with regards to encouraging students and teachers to participate in water programs, the Aqua Adventure Free Water and Nature-Based Field Trips for 4th to 6th graders that CalWater will support and send classrooms and teachers with the chance for a field trip. The Splash and Creativity for kids K-12, and Water Smart Grants, $100 grants to teachers proposing classroom projects. And H2O, in which students commit to a pledge and learn more about water conservation. And I know that our city was doing our best efforts here too, to assure that we conserve water and not only that, use rainwater to do some of our, you know, watering for vegetation and water needs outside of our home. And we had barrels for that, I don't know if we still do, we might. However, I'll have Vaughn work with the Public Works Department to see if we could maybe provide barrels so that you could collect rainwater and use that recycled water. Thank you.
Okay. Meeting's almost over, so I'd like for us to just have a moment of silence for all those people who have passed away in the Middle East conflict that's taking place right now. Okay, may they, may they all rest in peace. This meeting is adjourned at 8:31.